Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, September 3rd, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the August 2019 public hearing, if there is one correction we need to make to the minutes, and that is to change the name of the chairman from Smith to Williams. That being the only correction, is there a motion with that noted correction to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve as correct.
Is there a second? Commissioner Thompson?
A second that we approve as corrected.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion done a second to approve the minutes with the one correction with the name change, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, October the 1st, 2019, at 12:30 PM, Sixth Wall Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their October the 8th or October the 22nd, 2019, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first item, Z-19-04 Uptown. Mark Dignard of Innovative Architect and Interiors is requesting to rezone approximately two acres located at 1501, 1509, 1515, 1519, 1523, and 1541 High Street, 1502, 1538, 1514, 1544, and 1520 King Street, and 517 Peninsula Avenue, from D2 Form-Based Code to Neighborhood Mixed Use, in order to construct a 25,000-square-foot Hampton Roads Community Health Center. The future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial uses. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority and is further described as Tax Map 97, Parcel 16, Parcel 14, Parcel 13, Parcel 12, Parcel 11, Parcel 10, Parcel 17, Parcel 18, Parcel 19, Parcel 20, Parcel 21, and 22. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioners. My name is Mike Glenn, and I represent the developer, 1541 High Street LLC. A team we have assembled here today includes Michelle Belay, who is the Chief Financial Officer for Hampton Roads Community Health Center, Yvette Young, who's the Chief Operating Officer for Hampton Roads Community Health Center, and Mark Dignard, who is Principal with Innovate Architecture and Interiors. I want to start off by saying thank you to planning staff for the work they put together for this presentation. They did a lot of the hard work for us, so thank you. We know we have a short time here, so we'll be brief, but I'm going to probably provide you some background and details of the project that were not presented. Then our team will share with you with what they have about the center itself, who it serves, and what services are provided. Finally, Mr. Dignard will discuss aspects of the design, which we believe will enhance the project and the community. Hampton Roads Community Health Center is currently located off of Effingham on Lincoln Street, in a 60-year-old building, shopping center actually, that has been retrofitted to house their medical operation. The city approached Hampton Roads Community Health Center about relocating their new center to a new location. It is more centrally located and will allow for a new, modern, and specifically designed medical facility that will greatly improve and expand the services they provide to the City of Portsmouth and the community, and even patients outside of the City of Portsmouth. We have entered into a contract with the EDA, as mentioned before, to purchase the land for the development of the health center. We have completed schematic drawings and hope to proceed with construction drawings after today. This project provides a significant economic impact to the City of Portsmouth via job creation during construction and more jobs for the health center after construction. Additionally, we are investing more than $10 million into the community, are committed to developing a Class A Medical Health Facility. We've had several discussions with the Westbury Civic League president and are officially scheduled to meet and present to the Civic League later this month on the 17th. I will turn it over now to Mr. Belay and Ms. Young to talk further about their great facility.
Good afternoon. The Portsmouth Health Center opened in 1995 after a collaborative study was done with the City of Portsmouth and major healthcare organizations, and it was revealed that there was a shortage in distribution of primary healthcare physicians. So, we opened our doors in 95 to answer that call. Currently, our hours of operation are 7:30 AM to 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday. We are open two times per month until 7 o'clock PM to provide pediatric services because of the demand for our families. We also open one Saturday per month, from 8 o'clock AM to 1 o'clock PM, for medical and dental services. We are a patient-centered medical home. That means that our patients are at the center of their medical care. They are able to access their providers through our patient portal, and they're also able to access their providers by asking questions or even scheduling appointments. 24/7, we have after-hours access for our patients, so if there's something, an emergency that occurs and need to talk with someone, we have providers on call. We are also joint commission accredited. That means that we are held to a standard to provide safe and effective care at the highest quality and value to our patients. Currently, we have 13 board members, five of which are Portsmouth residents, and 62% of those board members are patients. We provide evidence-based care, so that our providers and nursing staff have to receive ongoing training to ensure that they are providing the best services to our patients possible, they're not just making decisions off the cuff. So, this year, we changed our mission to "We Care," so that you can be healthy, something simple, but it's very impactful. We have board-certified physicians that have a passion to serve the community, and we also have certified dental providers as well. Additionally, some of the services that we provide are primary care services for adults, OB-GYN services for women, pediatric care for babies and children, behavioral health and dental care. We are, all of our patients can select who they choose to get their services. They come in, they say that they want Dr. Markovik, our CMO, to be their primary care provider, and that's who they will receive. We like that because it's just like going to any other primary care physician. Also, we provide laboratory-ing x-rays, pharmacy services. We find the best price for medications for our patients. We have health insurance enrollment assistance, helping those that are uninsured to get insurance through the Medicaid expansion or Medicare. Also, we have case managers and accessibility for language services for individuals that do not speak English, is not their primary language. And so, with that being said, that's what represents the Hampton West Community Health Center, and our desire is to continue to provide more and more services. We serve about 12,000 individuals on an annual basis with 33 encounters, 33,000 encounters. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Michelle Belay. I'll take the presentation from here, just a little bit of stats based on what we have currently. And, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Madame Chairman, and Secretary, and members of the Commissioner, Planning Council, just to roll right into, just for the City of Portsmouth. In a slide that we have, about 34% of our patients coming from the City of Portsmouth have private insurance. And I think that's attributable to the board-certified physicians that like to see no other than their primary care physician. We have 10% Medicare and 30% Medicaid, and approximately uninsured, underinsured patients of about 26%. And when we look at the economic impact that we bring to the city, and I believe with this new improvement, we see a tremendous opportunity to even do more. Now, currently, our budget is around $10.5 million for fiscal year '20. We have about 120 employees, and out of these employees, 73 of them are residents of Portsmouth. You know, they are residents of Portsmouth. We represent approximately 16.3 million economic activity, and we do pay tax revenue through the real estate taxes, through the landlord that charges back to the health center. When you look at the economic impact, you have the ripple effect, and you also have the direct impact. So, overall, around the 16.3, you have, the direct impact goes on to help stimulate the ripple effect, you know, as economists would say. All things being equal, once you spend money, it goes to the community, it goes to shop, the intent pay employees, and they spend, and it keep multiplying, the multiplier effect. So, this is what I have to present from the financial perspective.
Thank you. I'm Mark Dignard with Innovate Architecture and Interiors, and you can tell why we're excited about being a part of this project. A little background on me, I'm a Manor High School Portsmouth product. My mother is a Wilson High School graduate, and my grandmother is a Karatik High School graduate. She's actually, I think, the oldest living citizen in Portsmouth. She lives right here downtown, and she'll be 105 in February. So, to say this, you know, is important to us is an understatement. So, with that, the question became, how do you take all that they do and put it on the site in such a way as to make the building the best that it possibly can be? And that was our challenge with Mike. Let's figure out the best answer, not just an answer, but what's the best answer? And the way you do that is first you program the building to figure out all the spaces and all the services that they provide, to understand how they'll have to interact together. And what we found is that there's a lot more medical and patient-focused space in the building than there is administrative space. So, that means we're going to have a two-story building, but the first floor has to be bigger than the second floor. So, how do we use that to our advantage to create a building on the site that has a maximum impact, not only for their internal flows and processes, but for the community at large? And so, what we came up with is an L shape. What the L shape does, literally, is it welcomes the city, the public, families and patients into the building. So, the entrance is in the middle. Doing the L shape helps us do a couple things. That two-story section we talked about ends up on the King Street, and what that helps us do is it insulates the residents from the activity of the front door, because if this is my L, the residents are back here, but the activity is here. It also helps us reach one of the arms of the building out to the street, so that we can create a pedestrian portal to invite people that are walking or coming from public transportation into the facility as well. It's important that this building acts as a beacon for the community, for all the patients and families that currently go to the facility, but also need those services that really aren't aware that it's there. One of the other byproducts of this is that it actually opens itself up to the high school as well, and from what they tell us, they serve a great need with high school kids these days. So, we can go a little bit to the images. So, we'll start with this one, because it's the back of the building. One thing you'll notice is that we are treating the back of the building just like the front of the building in terms of articulation, bricks, colors, fenestration, glass. It doesn't even have a back door, because we don't want people coming and going from the residential side, because we want the activity to be around on the public side. One of the things this image doesn't have, that the building will certainly have, is all of the required landscaping and buffering, and all the things that will be required by the city just to get through the site plan process, because you guys already have all of that in place. We'll head to our next slide. But this is the image you can see where the building sort of is doing what I was motioning to, which is opening up to the public at large. The center is where, with each healthcare facility, the center, you'll have, you know, a patient drop-off, and that vehicular activity is something that we want to bring into the site. But you can see the blue sort of box on the end, that's the portal welcoming patients that are on foot. So, we can go to the next slide. You can kind of see that here. So, this center is the entrance to the building, and then there's the piece that reaches out with a covered pathway to the street. Right across the street is the bus stop as well, which we think helps with the vehicular, pedestrian, sort of multimodal access to the building. But again, we've tried to make this building something that has a lot of unique elements to it. The color of the health center's logo was represented in the building. At night, the building would have a soft glow, so you could see those colors, and it will, you know, draw folks into the building that need those critical services. In the end, our goal here is a Class A office building, medical office building, that gives them a home that they desperately need and deserve for all the great hard work they've been doing. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I have a question, whether it's for the developer or for the CFO, I'm not sure. Your annual tax revenue of $21,000 out of 16.3 million in economic activity, can you explain what calculation that represents?
The 16.3 is driven by the ripple effect. That's the overall. You know, our budget itself is 10.4. Salaries is our biggest expenditure. So, out of the 10.4, close to about 6.4 is for salaries, benefits, and things like that, 401K. You also have purchasing from the, you know, local community vendors, purchasing other supplies, most of our locals supporting the Lowe's, the Walmarts, and things like that, making purchases that can help bring in. So, as people take that money and they spend and they pay other employees, yeah, it kind of multiplies out and goes out to that calculation.
I understand what you're saying, but 21,000 is about .001% of the amount.
Okay, the 21,000 roughly is the real estate taxes that we pay to our landlord. We pay to our landlord that goes to the city directly.
And the landlord is the developer?
No, right now, the landlord is a different landlord that we rent the facility from, for what we own currently.
So, as part of the development process, we'll develop the building, lease it to our tenant, and then we pay taxes, and we charge a proportion of those taxes, or the taxes is passed through to the tenant. But either way, real estate taxes are paid. They aren't forgiven because of being a nonprofit.
Thank you.
And then we also pay personal property tax as a developer for all the improvements inside the building too.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Commissioner Young, blood.
Thank you, sir. How do you qualify to become a patient at this facility?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we take all patients. Yeah, all patients, we take the insured, the uninsured, underinsured, and the unique thing is we offer pretty much all aspect of services under one roof, where you have the primary care service provider. If somebody needs to see a dentist, there's what they call a direct handoff, you know, where somebody, they call the dental provider to come in to take the patient. You also have what they call behavior help, all under one roof. If somebody's having some difficulty coping with some situation, we have LCSWs, licensed clinical social workers, we can right away take the patient to a place and take care of them. So, you know, the qualification is we see everybody, but the majority of the people that come to the health center, as you can see, 34% have private insurance.
So, it's not, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, I could go there.
Oh, yes, please. Yes, please, certainly.
And I'm covered by Medicare.
Yes.
And so, it's not a facility that is expressly designed for the underinsured or the indigent or the kind of folks that these letters have brought up. I'm sure you saw the letters from the Civic League, and it made it appear in my mind that they were afraid that you were going to be a magnet for undesirable people. And if I understand you correctly, that's not your mission at all. You're open to everybody, correct?
Yes, please. We're open to everybody, and I think we are partially federally funded, and that means we have to provide access at a reasonable price, because you want the patients to invest in their care, at a reasonable price based on the federal poverty guidelines. And I believe, based on the statistics, you know, of the uninsured, the underinsured, the people falling through the cracks, yes, those are not the only people. We have all aspect of people. Medicaid is one of our biggest percentages as well.
Right, I saw that between the insured and the Medicare, it's about 44% of your customer base.
Yes, please.
Which, okay, that's the point I wanted to get to. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-19-04. I do have a few speakers. As I call your name, would you come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Donna Si.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Portsmouth. I've got a lot of thoughts about this project. The basic thought is this, we've got civic leagues all over the city, and we're they contacted to become aware of what's planned, because this project is affecting everybody in the city, not just a certain neighborhood. The other thing that was brought out, the girl gave a report talking about police communication, and that wasn't research. I would like to know about that. What will happen to the old building? You know, we have a lot of buildings, people vacate because they want something better, and then the old building just sits there. Another point is statistics on the types of healthcare services that have been used, and number of people using these services, to have an overview, like a statistical report, instead of an overview or overview. So, we know exactly how many people are being served, what they're being served, and how they respond to treatment. No research was included with the cost of rehabilitation of the old building. That would have been a great idea to have, here's how much it's going to cost for the new building, how much would it cost for the repair of the old building? 60 years old is not old. One of the things, one of the studies that was done, it was talked about, projects were done in Portsmouth, and there was no vision to connect the projects. And this seems like this building is going to be stuck on the side of High Street that you have to look at every time you come down and go back out. It's right there. We have social service building, and we have the behavioral health building. How did they coordinate the services with these, and also the health department? How had they coordinated the services of these other three healthcare providers? Of course, we have met at Maryview. So, those are the things I have questions about. So, I oppose this plan, because I don't think it's been comprehensive enough for the people of Portsmouth. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Si. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker, Pamela Wilkins. Would you come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Wilkins. I stay, I live 805 Elm Avenue, and I'm currently the president of the Westbury Civic League. Upon seeing the signs on the property that this company is planning to build, you know, I got a lot of calls from the community members, especially the homeowners, especially the ones that live, that's going to be in the back of that building, this tall building that's going to be blocking that view. So, I decided to do a little research myself on community health centers, and what I found was normally they're supposed to be located in areas where, that are underserved, or in rural areas where people can't get to the facility. Right now, as it already has been pointed out, we have the behavioral health, we have the health department, Maryview right down the street, there's plenty of places where people can get services. And the next thing about that is, most of the homeowners out in Westbury are working, tax-paying individuals on moderate incomes, that is unlikely that they will use that facility. They have private insurances through their jobs, and they go to, because I've asked, they go to their own doctors of their choosing, they don't go to a community health center. And so, they really don't want it there, and it's going, already, we have been bombarded since we've been out of Westbury. We have had several projects that wanted to come just in that area that was going to affect the homeowners. Now, we purchased those homes with the mindset that it's going to be a community, not to be, you know, attract all kinds of individuals. While we have the Oasis, we have, and I'm not downing anybody that's indigent or don't have, I'm not doing that. I'm just saying, we have had problems with people coming from Oasis, the behavioral health, coming through our neighborhoods, going, checking our car doors, break-ins during the daytime, and this facility is only going to make our community, a high-density community, and it's going to bring a whole lot of people through our homes. So, we've got to be a word about whether anybody's going to try to break into our homes or whatever. That's one of the issues. And then the building itself is going to be blocking everything. When we bought those homes out there in Westbury, especially that area, that's right there, I don't know the parcel number to that land that they want to build it on, but Housing Authority promised the homeowners that purchased that nothing would be built on that land for 20 years, and that was one of the factors in a lot of them buying it. So, in the meantime, during that time, somehow Housing Authority sold the property to Portsmouth, I mean, to the City of Portsmouth, yes. So, I guess the, what they had, the covenant that they had made with the potential home buyers at that time, I guess that just went away. So, we're, you know, the homeowners want to know, if they knew that information, that something like that was coming in the community, perhaps they would have chosen somewhere else to buy. So, with that being said, then when I looked on the economic development webpage of the different sites in Portsmouth, that's a of the different sites in Portsmouth that's available, you have a site right adjacent to it, where this place wanted to be. Right on the corner is right beside the health department and social services. Then you have a big building here, used to be Wind Seafood. There's a lot of area right there that they could build it, that's not going to be in front of anybody's front door. If you go further down High Street, like going towards Maryview Hospital, there's a big parcel of land right beside the Monluther King, the intersection that goes through the tunnel. There's a big piece of property there. So it would still be on the bus line for those who don't have cars that can come to the facility. And like I said, the people, how Westbury, is unlikely they're going to use it. They have cars to go to whatever doctor they choose to go to. They wouldn't be coming to the community health center. And the stats that they gave, 34% have private insurance. I'm not saying they said anything wrong, but I find that hard to believe. Because if I have private health insurance, I don't think a community health center would going to be on my mind to go there for my primary care. Because you have all other facilities and, you know, quality doctors that you can go to. Not saying they're not qualified, but I'm just saying. And not only that, who, if you think about it, the neighborhood you live in, would you want a health, community health center in your front yard every time you come?
Ms. Wilkins, you have one minute.
Oh, every time you look out your door, want to sit on your porch, you got to see all this traffic constantly. So we oppose that being there, and we ask that they choose another option, because there are several properties in Portsmouth that they could use. I understand that that property is good, because it's already cleared off, they don't have to do much work. It's ideal, but not at the expense of the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
Our next speaker, Jalisa Jamote. Come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Jessica Jamote, and my address is 703 Twine Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia, which is in the Westbury neighborhood. I must say that I do not have enough information to speak totally intelligently about this situation. And I do apologize for my ignorance of not knowing how to address you people. However, I would say that just from what I've heard today, I am opposed to it. I hear them talk about their numbers and how they service, but have they really went into the Westbury neighborhood to see? Because I personally don't use their facility, and I wouldn't use their facility. I do believe that the facility will be a beautiful building, but still an eyesore for someone that is on King Street, looking out of their, on their front porch, having to see that facility. I think that it's laughable, you know, to say that since the facility is, the back of the facility is to the residents, that, you know, unwanted traffic would not be there. Westbury is an open area, it's an open community, and we do have a lot of foot traffic. It's actually certain people depending on where they live that have paths through their front yard, because they're already accessing the family dollar, or they're walking to the food line, or they're walking to, I think it's called the Valero. So I do think that it will give us more foot traffic than what we absolutely want to see. And I just wondered, did they actually look at alternative locations as well as with the old building? What is going to be done with the old building? And let's say that this building is built in 60 years. Will they just move out of this building and then it become even more of an eyesore? Because now it's not being up, there's no upkeep being done to it. So, and then the only other thing that I would like to express is just the time. Like what public were we trying to hear, have to come and speak about this? Me personally, I had to take time off of working order to be here, because I just happened to ride past the sign and see that it was there and see that, you know, the meeting was today. So I don't think that, one, that the plan is comprehensive enough, and I don't think that the right people have been contacted to hear their viewpoint on it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jamote. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-1904. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, we have two items on the agenda. The first item is Z-19-04. Is there a motion? Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, sir. I make a motion that we approve Z-19-04 as submitted.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I'd like to second that.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-1904, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved six to zero. Our next item, UP-19-14 Uptown Mark, Dagnard of Innovate Architect and Interiors, is requesting a use permit to, in order to construct a 25,000 square foot Hampton Roads Community Health Center at 1501, 1509, 1515, 1519, 1523, and 1541 High Street, 1502, 1538, 1540, 1544, and 1520 King Street, and 517 Peninsula Avenue. The property is currently zoned D-2 Form Base Code, and the applicant is jointly proposing a rezoning to the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district. The property is designated for commercial development on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. The property is owned by Economic Development Authority and is further described as Tax Map 97, Parcel 16, 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, 17, and 18, Parcel 19, 20, 21, and Parcel 22. The staff coordinator, Julie Chop, will be applicant or the representative for this application. Please come forward and present your application at this time.
The Commissioner, Mrs. Daggett, was your presentation included in the previous presentation?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay. His presentation was including the previous presentation. Is there any additional items you'd like to add? There being none. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address UP-19-14, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Again, my name is Pamela Wilkins. I live 805 Elm Avenue. I'm coming on behalf of the Westbury Civic League. If I understand correctly, this particular thing you are voting on now is to give him the permit to rezone from what?
No, this is the use permit. The previous item was the rezoning.
Okay. So this is the permit to rezone?
No. This is to rezone the property was the one we just previously did, Z-1904. The one we just voted on was the rezoning of the property.
Okay. And so this now is what?
This is the use permit to build on the property.
Okay. Okay, well, still, we unopposed, well, we're in opposition to it. We ask that, you know, it could be considered that they choose another property or use some other options rather than erect this facility and rent the homeowners' front yards. There are plenty of other areas, they can even renovate where they are. And I would hope that, that you all, can't you request them to give you a little bit more comprehensive report, especially on the current users that have private insurance that use their facility? Rather than just, we can all say, well, people going to come, people going to use it, it's going to do this. But if we don't have stats to back it up, we're just talking. So can that be added to it, that they provide a little bit more comprehensive statistics details? And as the other young lady said, no survey was done to the homeowners out of Westbury. She just asked, you know, would you all use a facility like this if it came to your area? I think that would have been appropriate to see who would use it. And I talked to one of the young ladies there prior to this time, and she said she did send out a survey. But I asked her, who was the survey sent out to? And so she sent, she never did confirm who she sent it to, but I can only imagine that was sent to the people that currently use it. But you're going into a neighborhood with people that you think is going to use a facility. I think it would have been real appropriate to ask them what they thought about it as well. You know, when we build stuff or do things, I think we should have, morally, I think it would be nice to, you know, talk to the people that's going to be affected by it, other than just, here, you just take this, this is what it's going to be. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Ms. Wilkins, irregardless to how the Planning Commission votes on the item, the City Council also has to vote on that.
Right, I know they have the final say.
So you have every right to, if this is approved, you have every right to appeal to the City Council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
This is partial clarification. So this use permit will only allow this particular Hampton Roads Community Health Center to be constructed on this property. Is that correct? No other healthcare facility could go there, just this particular one?
This use permit goes with the land. It does not go with this individual applicant. But there are conditions that would go with the use permit, go with that as well, including the elevations and all that other information. Very unlikely someone would want to build the exact same thing that they're proposing here today.
Thank you. And then one other thing, someone made the point that there are three other health-type facilities within the few blocks there. And I really, I truly would like to know how they have, I mean, do we have duplicating services here? Has anybody looked at that? It seems like we may. And I would be curious to hear that.
Okay, so one of the places that we were talking about is the Portsmouth Health Department. The Portsmouth Health Department offers different services than the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. They are also, you know, they have a mission to provide environmental health services for the protection of the Portsmouth residents and visitors. We serve anyone that comes to see us that would like services. We are not, they work very closely with the CDC, but they are here to represent the safety, environmental health of Portsmouth. As far as the Community Services Board is concerned, they provide mental health services. However, we provide, we work with the Community Services Board to provide, to have that bridge between the total care of behavioral health services and the other one would be what we provide is medical services. So they refer patients to us. And currently, it is very difficult for anyone to get into the Community Health, the Community Services Board in which to get the services that they need, because they're so inundated with individuals with behavioral health needs. So we're just another opportunity to assist individuals that have health, but we take a holistic approach in also serving their medical needs. What was the other organization that you were asking about?
Someone said there was three different facilities right there, social services, health department.
Okay, we work with Maryview in partnership with Maryview. We have worked with them with the area hospitals for many years. We refer, Maryview patients, once they're released from care, they're referred to us to assist with some of them in their ongoing care, because if they go there for through the emergency room or through a hospital care, they're released, they're released from the hospital, they have to have ongoing care. So we provide that. We also provide OBGYN services, of which Maryview no longer provides those services. So there, we have in many ways fulfilled a gap that exists in medical care for the citizens in Portsmouth. So that's the, so there is no duplication of services. Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on UP-1914. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. One of the things that kind of concerned me was the Portco Company came to EDA to get money for facade improvement. And they provide for the behavioral situation of people, you have your behavioral health. So I think, I think our concern is, how is services being coordinated and communication in the city for the citizens? So as far as I'm concerned, communication has not been effective in this city. The Planning Department, the EDA, PRHA, they transferred the property over to the EDA. I didn't know anything about the EDA. I think they had these people visiting one time. But the information is not being sent out to all the citizens. It's not a favoritism city. It's all the people are to be educated and engaged, because it's how are we getting our needs met? All of the people's needs, not just them who wants to use the federal government guidelines to get money and have a business. So I'm really concerned about, and then just seven people are making the decision, oh, yeah, it'll go to public hearing. But it's just a format, five minutes, it's just a format to get along with the government. So vote, yeah. Y'all vote for all the people of Portsmouth. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else who would like to address UP-19-14? Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion for UP-19-14 with conditions. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve UP-19-14 with conditions.
Is there a second? Commissioner Rick?
I recommend that we approve it with the conditions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-19-14 with conditions. And you will be voting electronically. This item is approved six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, will there be any further business? Mr. Baldwin?
Madam Chairman, thank you.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.